Carrillo, can I, I'm calling for four.
I guess Mayor Armando Ocaña.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jessica Ortega. Councilman Ruben Plata.
Here.
Councilwoman Nori Garza. Councilman Alberto Vela.
Here.
Mayor, we've got a forum with three, uh, two council members, I mean, yourself and Councilman Vela present, and Councilman Plata on Zoom.
I will call this meeting to order, and I will ask for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, everyone, and I'd ask to please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance. Heavenly Father, we trust and believe that your love and kindness will embrace us in this year ahead. We ask for your continued blessings and guidance to make it a successful year. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which is the same, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. I'll call for the presentation. I'll have Ms. Enriquez first. Enriquez, you have the floor, ma'am.
Hi, hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Hi, how are you?
Doing well, thank you, thank you so much. Okay, so we do have a couple of business development workshops coming up. On Wednesday at 10:00 AM, we do have an HR and COVID environment led by the SBDC and partnering with us. Uh, we also, on Thursday at 2:00 PM, we have an operations management workshop as well. Invitation has been sent out. Uh, the Office of Congressman Henry Foyard has requested the presence of our elected and public officials. Um, I sent over this invitation. Um, also, it's open to the general public, but it is gonna be an in-person event, so there's limited seating. Um, but what we're gonna do is whatever the discussion, uh, the takeaways, um, and the nuggets, we're gonna go ahead and share that information with our public and our community. But what the webinar is gonna be led by Congressman Henry Foyad is, um, in regard to the mission Palmhurst and Palmview Community, um, regarding the COVID relief, spending, and vaccine distribution discussion. So, uh, so that invitation is scheduled for January 14th at 2:00 PM, so we do hope that our mayor and city council can, can join us for that. Um, I also wanna go ahead and share my screen, and it's regarding our winter Texan Fiesta. Um, we're so excited, we're ready to go live, so I'm gonna minimize the screen real quick, yes. So here's the flyer, so we're really excited, as we said before, and we received approval. Um, this is, this is gonna be, um, one of our Discover mission efforts. And, uh, this year, instead of it being a Fiesta, it's gonna be a driving concert. Uh, it's, it's scheduled for Thursday, February 25th, at the Mission Events Center parking lot. There is gonna be two shows, there's gonna be a day show that begins at 3:00. If you purchased a VIP, it's gonna be at 2:00 PM. Evening show has the same concept, so 6:30, and then VIP arrive at 5:30. We're really excited, this is the first time we're gonna do something a little bit different. We are gonna have, um, drinks, we're gonna have a, um, a live concert for an hour with, uh, the member of the Traditional Country Hall of Fame, and then Kurt, which is the RDB Male Vocalist of the Year for 2020. We're also gonna have food vendors, we're gonna start allowing our community sign up for, um, to be a vendor, uh, at the end of this week. And then we're gonna open up our, uh, the tickets as well for our winter Texan community. So this is how it's gonna look like, it's gonna be a VIP parking pass, that, which is for $10, a general parking pass for $7. And of course, the vehicles can, can have up to seven, uh, passengers in there, of course, they have to be from the same family. Um, of course, the VIP pass is happy hour and prime location, so it's, it's limited parking spaces available because, um, because of a CDC. And, uh, we're excited for this event, so I just wanted to share, um, you know, our flyer. Uh, it's gonna go live this week, um, and we're really excited, we wanna thank our, our winter Texan population. And that is all I have for today.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Enriquez. Any question by any of the council members?
No.
No questions? Again, thank you very much, and we'll move right along to the departmental reports, and it's, they're under, uh, Mr. Perez. But I'm asking, I think any of the council members have any questions on the departmental reports that, that are in your pack? This is the time.
I do not have no questions, ma'am.
No question?
No.
Do I, I'll entertain a motion to approve the departmental reports.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All, both same sign, motion carries by 3-0. I will call for citizen participation, Ms. Carrillo, you have, you have the floor, ma'am.
Uh, yes, Mayor, we have Mr. Mario Reyna from Melvin and Hunt, who has signed up to give a few presentations to the council.
Uh, before I recognize Mr. Reyna, uh, I would like for the record to show them it's got, uh, it's, uh, it's arrived.
It's shown up.
It has arrived, and so now we have four, four, uh, members, uh. Mr. Reyna, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, uh, we'd like to share our screen with you guys if possible. Um, and we'd just like to give you an update on, on four projects that we're currently working on with City of Mission. Uh, the projects are, uh, the Mission Reuse Project, um, the North, Northwest Edap Project, um, the North Conway Sewer Gap Project, and the Sherry Road Sewer Gap Project. Mike Hernandez, who's an engineer here with us, is actually the project engineer on two of these projects, and he'll be talking to you about the first two.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, for the record, Mike Hernandez with Melvin and Hunt. And as Mario mentioned, I'd like to give you all an update on the Mission Reuse Project. This project provides for the construction of Type 1 reused water, uh, to be sent to the community park and to Simran Country Club. Uh, the estimated construction value is about $1.1 million. Currently, the Texas Water Development Board is reviewing the plans, contract documents, and the specifications. Uh, we've received approval from TCQ to discharge at these two locations. Uh, hopefully, this, the following schedule will, will come to fruition here pretty soon. Uh, we're looking at advertising and awarding this bid here in April of 2021, issuing a notice to proceed in May and begin construction, uh, shortly after, and completing this project in November. Uh, as you all know, we're, we're bringing that Type 1 reuse, uh, from the plant back to the park and back to the east to Simran. Uh, we've, we're pretty much in the final stages of completing the easement acquisition, which is taking the longest part on this project. So we're pretty excited here that this, this project's gonna come to fruition here pretty quickly. The next project I'd like to talk about a little bit more is the North Mission, what I call the Northwest Mission Edap Project. Uh, this is to provide first-time sewer service to some, uh, colonies out in the, between Benson Palm and La Homa, uh, between mile four and a half and mile seven. Uh, we're looking at connecting about 622, uh, dwellings out there. Uh, the plans and specifications and contract documents are bid-ready. The Water Development Board's reviewed this project, and it's, and, uh, and it's, it's good to go. I did, Mayor, I did speak to Mirel Loi currently. Uh, there's no funding in the Edap program. They're, they're still not sure when the, when legislation will take place to fund this project or the ED, Edap program, uh, in general. Uh, this is, this project is about $5.1 million. I do recommend that, that the, that staff in, in the council consider submitting a PIF, uh, a Project Priority Invitation Form to the Water Development Board, uh, for the 2022 Intended Use Plan. Uh, the deadline for that is March 3rd, 2021. Uh, there is also principal forgiveness, uh, on the loans for, for, for the Clean Water SRF Program, uh, that may be available to the city for this area. Uh, so, again, uh, with regards to this Edap Project, like I was speaking to Mirel this morning, they're uncertain when, when the state's gonna fund that program, but, like I said, I do recommend that we do proceed in submitting a PIF. That way, we have our op, we have two options, the Clean Water SRF Program and the Edap Pro, Program once it gets funded. I'll entertain any questions, if any, anyone has any, if not, I'm gonna turn it over to Mario to speak on his two projects that he's overseeing. So let me move on over to the next slide.
Mayor, it's three minutes, Mayor, you make that the work.
The chair recognizes the extension of the three minutes in accordance to the rules. Go ahead, Mr. Mario, your extension has been recognized by the chair.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, again, Mario Reyna with Melvin and Hunt, uh, thank you for having us this evening. Um, the North Conway Road Sewer Line Project, which is to connect the gaps between two and three mile line, is currently 100% complete, the, the plan and specs. Uh, we've received, uh, approval, authorization to bid this project last year from, from the mayor council. Um, and we planned to bid this project in February of 2021. Um, we planned to issue a notice to proceed on or before April 2021, um, and to complete the project by August of this year. The estimated construction cost is about $475,000.
Mr. Reyna, I have a question, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Your, your drawings, it shows the lines running on the, on the west side only. I thought we had amended the last time that we authorized it to do both on the east and west side.
Correct, Mayor, if you look at what's red on, on this drawing, uh, what's green is existing, what's red is, is what we're actually doing. Uh, so when we originally got awarded this contract and, and the easements that we acquired, were all on the west side of the project. Um, after the conversation with you yourself and with your staff, uh, we did add to the east side of the project, so that is included in the, the construction documents that have been reviewed by your staff.
I guess the question is, at the end of the day, are we gonna have sewer on the east and west side of Conway?
The answer is yes, Mayor.
Okay, that's, that's all, that's, that's my concern. Continue, Mr. Reyna.
Um, so, so this project is well underway. Uh, we've met with your staff a number of times, I think we have the plans and specs to where they are bid-ready, and, and we do have authorization to bid. Another, another project that I'm, I'm currently working on is, is filling in a sewer gap, uh, on North Sherry Road between 495 and 2 Mile Line. Uh, this project has been somewhat challenging. Um, there, there's a sewer line on individuals' property, and, and we had a hard time getting a right-of-entry to, to begin survey work at this site. Um, we have completed survey work, we have completed easement documents, and at the next meeting, you're gonna have before you what's called an 810, so that we can move forward and, and offer money to, to one of the particular homeowners who I feel we may, you know, end up in, in court with over an easement that is needed. Um, the plans and specs are 100% complete. I'm being conservative on the, the advertising schedule and the award schedule, putting it in September of this year. Um, notice to proceed in October, and it is a fairly small project. Uh, I do feel by the end of the year, we will have sewer at this location, and the construction cost is about $90,000 for this project.
Uh, Mr. Reyna, my concern is that if the specs are already 100% complete, why is a big gap between today and September 2021?
Mayor, I feel that we may have to go through condemnation with one of the owners there.
Okay.
Uh, we, we've been back and forth with her for, for four, five, six months, and, uh, I don't feel that she-
If we don't, if we don't move, we can move the, the September 2021 earlier, am I correct?
Yes, sir. So, so what you have before you at the next council meeting is an 810, where we can start the process of making offers to her to acquire the easement. Um, and if we don't have to go to condemnation, well, then this will be an easy start. Uh, but if we do, we feel that it'll be right around the September timeline.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reyna, any, any, that completes your presentation, or?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Okay, I'll open it for any other council members, if they have any questions.
On the Conway Project, are all the easements in place?
All the easements on the west side are in place, and we're going inside the right-of-way on the east side of the road.
Oh, so we're still lacking some then?
Yeah.
Okay.
A few.
Okay.
Or, or right-of-way.
Alrighty, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other question by any of the council members? Reyna, thank you very much, and your partner, thank you very much for the, the very well-informed presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Any other citizen participation, Mr. Carrillo? For the record, Ms. Ortega has shown up to-
I was on Zoom.
Yes, I, we, we actually, uh- Nope, nobody, nobody, we have no, no indication that we have citizen participation, therefore, I'm gonna close citizen participation and move over to the public hearing and, and ask the planning and zoning recommendation. Our agenda item number four, Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item four is a rezoning for the south five acres of Lot 26-1 West Addition to Sherland. This is from RT to R1, Francisco Ruiz is the applicant. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. The subject site is located approximately 1,500 feet north of Griffin Parkway on Inspiration Road, along the east side of Inspiration Road. Surroundings zones include R4 to the north and east, west, single-family to the west, agricultural to the south. Existing land uses are mobile homes to the north and east, single-family residential to the west, to the south is the Edinburgh Main Canal, and the site is currently vacant. The future land use map shows moderate density residential for this area. The proposed zone complies with the city's future land use map and surrounding land zone. The R1T would be a better neighbor for this area, staff and PNZ recommended approval. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, is there anybody on the audience that would like to address this item as a public hearing? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm gonna ask for, uh, is there anybody on the, on the electronic, uh, wanting to, to address this public hearing, Charlie? No, in this, I will close the public hearing, and I will, uh, turn it over to the council, council for your direction.
Mayor, could I see that, that, there, there you go. Um, I have a question as far as the, i- isn't the, that area, um, that had serious, um, flooding in the immediate area?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, yes, the, the property to the north of that-
Can you put the subdivision?
Uh, that had some concerns, I did, um, we did talk about it with JP and Suzy regarding, uh, a drainage report on this particular area, um, and the aerial, it shows, uh, the area that, um, immediate to the north, that subdivision, that's the area of concern on.
Yes, and I know that we're just looking at, at rezoning right now, and if there's really no conditions as far as that's concerned, but I, I do want to, to make it a point that, that drainage issues need to be seriously considered, um, so that there isn't any additional impact in the surrounding areas.
That is something that we will be considering once this, they submit a subdivision.
Okay.
Any other questions by any of the council members? I will entertain a motion at this time.
I want to approve the rezoning request as presented.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the rezoning. Second.
Second.
We have a second. Uh, in this, I'll open it for final discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Plata, you say aye?
Yes, Mayor, aye.
Okay. Uh, all those opposed, same sign. A motion carries with a, with a 5, 5-0, with a 5-0, or ordinance 4975 for the record. Ordinance 4975. Now I'm calling for item number five, Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item five is a rezoning of a 3.394 acre tract of land out of Lot 25-6 West Addition to Sherland. This is from Agricultural to C3 General Business, the applicant is Raoul Garcia Jr. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. This subject site is located near the northwest corner of Conway Boulevard and Griffin Parkway, along the west side of Conway. Surrounding zones include C3 General Business to the north, east, and south, and Agricultural to the west. Existing land uses include, to the north is Wells Fargo Bank, to the east is Tacole. To the west and south is currently vacant. The future, the future land use map shows this area as general commercial. The proposed zone complies with the city's future land use map and surrounding land zones. Staff and PNZ recommended approval for this item. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this rezoning? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come to the podium and then discuss the, any in favor or against this rezoning? I don't see anybody in the audience approaching their podium, therefore, I'm gonna ask for the electronics. I'm gonna turn it, do we have anybody? Since we don't have anybody, I will close this, uh, public hearing and then open it for direction from the council.
No for approval, Mayor.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. This, I open it for final discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, it goes 5-0, ordinance 4976 for the record. I'll open it for item number six, Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item six is a conditional use permit to designate this area as a mobile food park for operation of immobile food units. This is 801 North Bryan Road. The legal description is Lot 1 Tamkin Subdivision, it's currently sold industrial, and the applicant is Mission Economic Development Corporation. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. The subject site is located on the southwest corner of Bryan Road and Business Highway D3. On November 16, 2018, the council approved a conditional use permit to designate this area as a mobile food park for operation of mobile food units for a period of two years. The area being considered is located on the northern section of the property. This conditional use permit was approved with the idea to help businesses start up and then move to a brick-and-mortar restaurant, not to be on a permanent basis. Since the initial intent has been changed, therefore, the need to reconsider it as a new conditional use permit. The new request is to have 15 mobile units at any given time, 12 locations would be stationary, and three locations would be accessible as in-and-out locations. Patrons and employees will be able to access the restaurants from Jitters and the 5x5. Parking is held in common, the hours of operation will be Monday to Thursday from 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM, Friday and Saturday from 7:00 to 12:00 AM, and Sunday from 7:00 to 10:00. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years, subject to each mobile unit obtaining their own business license. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
Uh, this, this is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against in the audience for the conditional use permit? I'm not approaching the podium, therefore. Since I see nobody approaching the podium, I will close this, uh, the, the podium part, and I'm gonna ask for the electronic. We have nobody in the electronic, and, uh, and this, I'll close the public hearing and open it for the council, but before, uh, before the, uh, I open it for the council, I'd like to ask Mr. Silva if, uh, if he's okay with the conditional use permit instead of two years for life.
I would appreciate that, ma'am.
Okay. Is that okay with the council?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I'm not gonna lie, we've been on the phone various times, Daniel, with concerns, and I've been with Randy. My concern is, we have other establishments that say they sell food, but maybe not, and kinda operate as a bar, and so we're in, I mean, that's something that I'd like to discuss more, but for this particularly, um, we're down to 50% now.
Right.
Um, originally, I had thought that people would come, pick up food, and then leave, and some stay and hang out. I wanna be very cautious and make sure that when people stay and linger, it's family units, they're, uh, wearing masks, they're with a family, and if they do go and purchase a, a beer, what have you, at 5x5, or even a coffee at Jitters, that they come right back, and then they eat and leave. What I'm hearing, and I haven't seen it personally, because I've gone one time to purchase something, and apparently, it's going really well for these businesses, because they were sold out. Um, I just wanna make sure that people are not just hanging around, and with Mission being the highest right now with COVID numbers, I, I'm very leery with that.
I understand, and, uh, during the COVID time, we'll make sure to continue to enforce the CDC guideline. Um, you know, we, we will make sure that if they're moving around, they have to be wearing their masks. We have all of the operators enforcing that. Uh, we do have the tables set far enough apart that there is no, you know, they are family units that sit at a single table, and, uh, we'll continue to enforce that.
Do you all have law enforcement there, or any type of security?
No, we do not. Uh, during, uh, events, we've talked about having law enforcement, but we have not. I mean, I can talk to the, to the police department and see if we can coordinate something or-
I think that would be nice, because having a law enforcement presence, or someone from our task force, can probably be giving warnings or some type of citations, because if you're not being told you're doing something wrong, they're gonna continue with that behavior. And I'm all for this type of businesses, I've always have been, but, um, we just have to be very careful when we see a huge crowd, and the number one thing, when people call me, they just say, "It's packed, your parking lot is super-packed, what's going on?", you know? And so we just need to be very careful with it.
I understand, no, definitely, I mean, it's, it's 50,000 square feet of, of open space, so we made sure that the tables-
Uh, I can attest, the times that I've been there with my wife, you know, that, that we were, we spent about, approximately about two hours in there, and then had a great time, you know, and we ate, and, you know, we talked, and we went to Jitters, get, had some coffee off, all there, and then, uh, you know, and mingle with the people, and we're using CDC guidelines, and, and, and left, and we had a good time. It was two hours that we were there, you know, that I can attest.
We won't force it, I understand.
Thank you.
No.
Are you okay with life?
With what?
With changing it from conditional use-
With changing it from conditional use permit from instead of two years for life, a permit and have him, so he won't have to be coming back and forth to us.
Can we do five years? Can we do five years?
That's fine. That's what you want, five years.
We don't want to be over lenient.
Five years.
The only thing is I, I, I like Jessica's idea of the, and I hadn't thought of that, but because there is alcohol being served, right?
Correct.
And so I think it's a good idea to have at least one security guard present, you know?
Understood. Yeah, we'll, we'll look and like I said, I'll talk to the police department and see if we can work something out with them. If not, then we'll hire a private entity to, to provide a security service.
And I think the modest is here. We do have a security company that's already gone through all the, all the things. So if Mission PD can't have staff get that, then we would have to even look for the budget for that, but I think it's very important to have that.
The chief, the security guard, you know, that's what he'd be doing for us already, you know, where, just let them.
Yeah, that's something that we've talked about because we, I mean, as we've grown it, we've, we've encountered new things and we're trying to take care of those. And lighting is another thing that we're going to be fixing soon. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's definitely something that would be beneficial.
And the greenery and stuff, the, the we've talked about, the.
Yes.
Natural serve.
Right, yeah, we plan on, hopefully when COVID is over, the families can get out and play games.
My last question, Daniel. If somebody in the audience or know of anybody that wants to come and participate in this type of business, what do they call it? There's still availability or do you already have the fifteen trucks?
So we don't have the fifteen trucks. They can reach out to our office. We do have a list of trucks that have shown interest. But we'll, we'll definitely go through the list as they've approached us and we'll, we'll work with them to see if that's, like I said, like we've mentioned, it's twelve permanent with three in and out. Maybe cycling them on the in and out so that they can start getting used to it, but yeah, we'll definitely work with them. They can call the E D C office.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I have a motion?
I move for approval.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second with the.
With a five year.
With a five year and a security guard.
The motion includes the five years of security. You know? And all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries for ordinance forty-nine seventy-seven with the, with the changes that that is still a five years instead of a year and include the security guard or police officer.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you for this. I'm moving on to consent agenda. All consent agenda items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed and considered separately. The city council may take various actions, including but not limited to rescheduling an item in its entire for a future date or time. The city council may elect to go into executive session or any item. Correction, on any item, whether or not such item is voted as an executive session item at any time during the meeting when authorized by the provision of the Open Police Act. We have a call for consent agenda item seven, eight, nine with ordinance forty-nine seventy-eight, ten, eleven, twelve with resolution seventeen zero six, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen with resolution seventeen zero seven, seventeen with resolution seventeen zero eight and an item number eighteen. Council, at this time, what are your wishes?
I move for approval as presented.
Second.
We have a motion. And a second. And this, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion, motion carries for the consent agenda item seven, eight, nine, which includes the ordinance forty-nine seventy-eight, ten, eleven, twelve, which includes resolution seventeen zero six, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, which includes resolution seventeen zero seven, seventeen, which includes resolution seventeen oh eight and eighteen. And the vote is five oh. So I'll be moving to approvals and authorization and I'm going to be with item number nineteen and Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number nineteen is a preliminary platapool for Tanglewood at Benson Palm Phase Three. This is the re-subdivision of three point nine five zero acres located on the southern of Portones, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two out of Lot Fourteen del Monte. Irrigation and Construction Company. It's currently zone P U D. The developer is Mike Rhodes and the engineer is Melvin and Hunt. This subdivision is located at the east end of Oriole Drive, which is four hundred and thirty linear feet from the northeast corner of Robin Lane and Oriole Drive. The developer is proposing eighteen single-family residential lots. It has city water and sewer. P and, P and staff are recommending approval. This item is now before you.
Direction from the council.
I move for approval as presented.
We have a motion. For and a second to approve item number nineteen. And this I'll open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item number nineteen is approved by five oh and I'm calling for item number twenty. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number twenty is a preliminary platapool for El Milagro subdivision phase one. This is a hundred and seventy-six point fifty-seven acres. This is part, being part or all of lots nine dash seven, nine dash eight, nine dash nine, nine dash ten, ten, dash seven, ten dash eight, ten dash nine, ten dash ten, eleven dash seven, eleven dash eight, eleven dash nine, west addition to Sheraland subdivision. It's currently zone P U D. I'm sorry, agricultural. It's P U D proposed. The developer is Chapel Land Sales LLC. The engineer is Melvin and Hunt. This subdivision is located between South Conway Boulevard and Asaluas Highway and north of Los Indios Road. There, the developer is proposing three hundred and thirty-three single-family residential lots, one hundred townhouse lots, one multifamily lot, three commercial parking lots, twelve commercial tracks, seven green landscape and common lots, six landscape grain parking lots, four civic lots for a total of four hundred and sixty-six planned unit development. This is part of the Killam new construction. They have city water and sewer. P and C and staff are recommending approval. This item is now before you. Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second and this I'll open it for discussion.
I just have a question.
Go ahead, ma'am. You can, you have the floor.
So the zoning currently is A O I.
Yes, we should be seeing at the next meeting the zones as well as the P U D adoption.
Okay.
But that is.
Okay, thank you. That's all, ma'am.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, ma'am.
How big is, the lots are going to be?
They vary. They have a different sections and they have different, different sizes of lots. You'll, you'll be getting.
But all of the leaders, minimum standards.
Yes, they're above, above the meeting standards.
They're all above our minimum standards.
Yes, they are. Okay.
And there are over three hundred and thirty-two, but.
Residential, just residential lots. It's a total of four hundred and sixty-six divided second altogether.
Good. Big major improvement. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item twenty is five oh. Ms. Luna, thank you. I'm calling for item number twenty-one. Mr. Ben Mardes, you have the floor.
Hey, ma'am, it's the council. I bring before you item twenty-one. Authorization of payment to Archie Form for the Madero International Bridge renderings and video animation. Archie Form was engaged to prepare marketing and design documents with renderings and an animation video with up to three bridge route options for the Madero Bridge. The fee is ten thousand dollars based on the scope of work. Archie Form is part of the contracted pool for professional architectural services. Staff recommendation is the approval.
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second. This I'll open it for discussion.
Ben Mardes, have you seen the video presentation?
Yes, ma'am. He's worked diligently on it and.
Do you have a copy of that if you could send it to all of us?
Yes, of course.
I would, I would move back before because I've made some minor adjustments in addition to it. Very minor. And then once we get the final product out, we'll make copies for each. We actually have it on, on a, on a server right now.
Yeah.
The Mission Madero Reynosa.
You were going to about to play it? You all, let's do it. Play it. Play this one. Play this one.
The Mission Madero Reynosa multimodal international bridge. The rail system will begin in Monterrey, Mexico, connect to Reynosa and the newly constructed rail system will then travel into Mission. The artist rendition includes a glimpse from the Mexican aduana, including vehicular, pedestrian and rail toll international traffic.
If you don't recognize the voice, both that sounds.
The Mission Madero Reynosa Bridge is expected to be the busiest vehicular and rail and border crossing between Brownsville and Laredo, Texas, and is going to be vital to the economies of Texas, the United States, and it will be the gateway to the world. The Mission Madero Reynosa International Bridge is a five-lane crossing of the Rio Grande River, connecting the city of Mission with Reynosa, Mexico. Two lanes will be north, two lanes will be south and one emergency lane for both sides. The new Mission port of entry will be built on a one hundred acre site for G S A, two hundred acres for the railroad company switching station and it will be the largest Upper Valley port on the U S Mexican border with a technologically advanced, state-of-the-art inspection facility. The international railway will transition over the I B W C levee on the United States side. The system will then coast over the I B W C levee to the G S A Bridge Facility and Railway Inspection Station. It will include inbound border inspection facilities for rail pedestrians and passenger vehicles, outbound inspection facilities, toll collection facilities, a maintenance facility, rail switching station and parking. Here's a look from the United States side to Mexico of the U S Customs Facility. The rendition shows the connection to Military Road and South Los Evenos Road. There will be traffic flowing into the station from Los Evenos and a connector street to South Conway known as the G S A Loop. North of the G S A Loop, proposed is a switching station for the rail traffic after inspection. And now an aerial view of the entire site with a look at the Priority One layout. Priority one is the preferred route over the I B W C levee across the Rio Grande River into Mexico. This is a southern route. Priority two is upriver and includes a more northern design. Priority three includes a downriver central option. Now all three options in a more regional view, including railway traffic to the U S Customs Facility. The railway route glides into Mission and through Mission. A regional view shows the path of the proposed railway system from South Texas passing through Hebronville. That railway system then connects to Laredo, Corpus Christi and the rest of the United States.
Thank you. Any questions by council?
No, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call for a vote as we already have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion carries, item twenty-one is approved by five oh.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm calling for item number twenty-two. And Mr. Talinas, you have the floor.
Good evening, ma'am. Mayor, city council members. I come before you seeking authorization to purchase a forty, four fifty chassis via buy board contract six oh one dash nineteen and I VAC equipment via source well contract number one two two zero seventeen dash R V L. Basically, ma'am, we're looking into purchase a camera van for our public works department and the total contract price or bid price for this item is two hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and three dollars with ninety-seven cents, which is the combination of both equipment, the chassis, which is from board and the the actual I VAC equipment, which is through Kenlock equipment.
Council, what's your direction?
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second. This I'll open it for discussion.
Can we just point out that the vehicle is thirty-seven thousand? So that it doesn't seem like they're paying two hundred and fifty-three for a vehicle.
Quarter million dollars for a vehicle, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good point.
Yes.
The, the amount is thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-one, am I correct?
Yes, that's where the chassis for the.
That's where the chassis.
For the, for the actual vehicle and then of course the, the actual equipment is two hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars with ninety-seven cents and, and both, a combination of both. It's going to be done through Kenlock equipment.
I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item twenty-two passive five zero, Mr. Talinas. Calling for item number twenty-three. Chief Domínguez, are you representative? You have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item twenty-three is authorization to purchase police equipment from Gauls LLC under buy board contract five eight seven one nine for the remainder of the twenty, twenty, twenty-two and one fiscal year. The Mission Police Department will be purchasing police equipment to properly outfit our officers continuously throughout the year. The combined purchase of these items will exceed the ten thousand dollar threshold allowed to be purchased per vendor outside of a contract or a work bid per fiscal year. Staff and city manager recommend approval for these purchases.
Move for approval, ma'am.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Then this I'll open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item twenty-three is approved by five oh and I will call for item number twenty-four. Chief Domínguez, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. Item twenty-four is a pool and ordinance providing for no parking zone on the east side.
For the record, chief, it will be ordinance forty-nine seventy-nine.
Forty-nine seventy-nine, yes, sir.
For the record.
Uh, on the east side of the twenty-five hundred block of Doody Avenue from Monday through Friday from eight AM to five thirty PM. The Mission Police Department received a request from Dr. Barry Berger after the city of Mission planning department approved head-in parking at the back of his business. The only resident affected by the no parking zone is the doctor himself that lives across the street. The street is a dead-end street. On December fifteen, twenty twenty, the Traffic Safety Committee recommended the adoption of an ordinance providing for the no parking zone. Staff and city manager recommend approval for this no parking zone.
I'm going to approve. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. This I'll open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries for item number twenty-four and ordinance forty-nine seventy-nine is approved, chief. And I'm calling for item number twenty-five and chief, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item twenty-five is authorization, authorized staff to acquire project program services from B P B K Architects for the police target range and fire department training facility. P B K will be delivering to the city of Mission a program verification information packet with a corresponding preliminary design as part of a conceptual program for the police target range and the fire training facility with a comprehensive list of the technical components required to bring a state-of-the-art training and certification facility to the city of Mission. The program will capulate the project to the next level and all participating stakeholders and potential funding sources or partner. The cost of the project program is in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second? And then just open it for discussion.
I have a couple of questions, ma'am.
Go ahead. Council, you have the floor.
Where is this coming from as far as the budget item?
Yes. So we will be, it is a combination of police and fire project. So part of it will be coming from the police special fund, half of it, and the other half would be out of the fire department budget.
So it'd be about $7,400 each?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Also, when we had our meetings with each director, I recall that actually Chief Dominguez mentioned that he was in dire need to expand the present facility. So is this something that we're considering as well? Or is this...
Yes, ma'am. So we are currently working with the chief. He's working on preliminary design. So what he, the immediate need is the expansion of his evidence room. So we are looking at the area that he does have available, and that's something that we will be looking to move forward to work on plans for them.
Okay, so then that project is priority over this, basically what you're telling me? Or is it could be worked at the same time?
Yes, it would be at the same time. What this is, this is would be for legislative purposes, this packet for the design of the police and fire training center would be for seeking funding through legislation as an original project. The expansion of his evidence would be an in-house project, not necessarily in-house, but one that we can work on designing, and then we would bid out for that, for that expansion.
Okay, I just don't wanna see that immediate need is put, you know, on the back burner.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
Any other question? I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed saying aye. Motion carries. Item number 25 is approved by a vote, chief. And I'm calling for item number 26. And Mr. Lerma, if you're on, you have the floor, sir. Mr. Lerma, you're muted. Mr. Lerma, according to my...
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. And Mr. Perez, good afternoon. Item number 26 is the approval of the Professional Service Contract with Mark Saucy, professional counselor. Mr. Saucy handles all the matters pertaining to civil service with the Mission Fire Department and the Mission Police Department, and as needed by Mr. Perez. His retainer is $2,500 a month, and staff and city manager are recommending approval at this time. Mr. Saucy is available. If anyone has any questions, he is available also on the line.
I will give the direction to the council person. And is there any council member has any question to Mr. Saucy? And if not, we entertain a motion.
I'm up to approve, ma'am.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second? And then just open up the final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed saying aye. Motion carries. Item 26 is approved by a vote. And I'm calling for item number 27. Chief Saucy, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 27, authorization to purchase NFPA 1582 physicals and NFPA 1583 wellness fitness evaluation from a sole source provider. The NFPA physicals and wellness fitness evaluations are broken down into six categories. The testing will be for 77 firefighters in the amount of $48,125. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm up to approve.
You have a motion to approve? Do I hear a second? We have a second? And then, in this, I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed saying aye. Motion carries. Chief Saucy, item number 27 is approved by a vote. And I'm calling for item number 28. Ms. Bella, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item number 28 is the approval of the attached budget amendments. We have three. In CDBG Fund, we have $713,270 in revenues and expenditures to carry over the remaining funds from the 2019 grant to complete housing rehabilitation and reconstruction projects and the COVID cares grant for public assistance. And we also have an adjustment for the 2020 grant from HUD due to a calculation error in the amount of $149. In the PD State Sharing Fund, we have $98,564 in expenditures to allocate the remaining fund balance for the 2020-21 fiscal year for the police department. And in the PD Federal Sharing Fund, we have $182,208 in expenditures to allocate the remaining fund balance for the 2020-21 fiscal year, also for the police department. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval, ma'am.
We have a motion on the floor for approval. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a second? And then just open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed saying aye. Motion carries. Item number 28 is approved, Ms. Bella. And calling for item number 29. And you have the floor.
Item number 29 is the acceptance of the monthly property tax report for the month of November 2020. The total 2020 tax levy was $24,360,542.81, and the amount of collections as of November 30th, 2020 is $1,873,950.58, which represents 7.69% of the 2020 tax levy. Total delinquent tax levy is $2,457,490.22, and the amount of collections as of November 30th is $121,349.80, which represents 4.94% of the total delinquent tax levy. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
We are up for approval.
For item number 29. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second? And then just open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed saying aye. Motion carries. Item number 29 is approved by a vote. And I'm moving to call for item number 30. Ms. Bella, you have the floor.
Approval, item number 30 is approval of the certified 2020 tax rule totals. The total taxable value for the city of Mission is $4,621,681... I'm sorry, $621,681,348, which resulted a total tax levy of $24,33,922.11, of which $20,33,559.91 is for operations and $4,362.20.20 is for debt service. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
We have a motion on the floor to approve item 30. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second?
Second.
Open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed saying aye. Motion carries. Item number 30 is approved by a vote. And I'm calling for item number 31. Ms. class, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item 31, approval of work authorization number 14 with Javier Nocosa Engineering related to the city of Mission Street Assessment Professional Services for the Street Assessment Project to the city of Mission with an estimated cost of $200,000. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Here, I have a question.
Go ahead and address the question before.
Okay. I'm wondering, if at all possible, we could ask for this assessment to be completed by cordons? Cordons?
By quarters.
Like quadrants?
Okay.
By quadrants?
By quadrants.
Quadrants is what I wanted to say. So that, so that we don't have to wait till he finishes the whole city before we get a report. So maybe he can concentrate on, you know, a fourth of the city at a time, and we can get a completed report that much faster.
A quadrant. Use the Conway in Business 83 as a cross, as a cross to create the quadrants and have him, like, if it takes him two months to do quadrant one, then we'll have him report quadrant one, and then quadrant two, and then quadrant three, and quadrant four. Am I correct?
Right, so basically four reports.
And then a final report.
That's a good idea, yes, ma'am. We'll get to that.
Yes, it was an idea which is pretty important.
Well, we wouldn't need to get on it right away. We don't wanna wait till we do the whole city and then start projects.
So I have a question.
When you negotiate the contract, make sure Mr. Valdez and you all bring it to his attention.
So I would imagine the worst area would, that would be quadrant, the first one, right?
Well, we do have...
Because as soon as he turns in, then they start working on it? Or he just turned it and it's, he's done? Because he's saying two months.
He's not, he's not turning it in only. He's turning it in and then funding the project. We have to fund the project. Once he gives us an estimate on the project.
Okay, so you give the direction of which one would be first? Which would be the area, the city, that needs the month's help?
That is correct, yes, ma'am. I will go with Javier Nocosa and discuss the most affected areas.
Yes.
Do an assessment of those areas first.
Thank you.
Start with that one first.
Yeah. I'm up for approval, ma'am.
Second.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second? And then just open it for final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed saying aye. Motion carries. Item 31 is approved by a vote. And I'm calling for item number 32. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Mayor and Council, item 32 is a discussion and action to approve voluntary annexation schedule for a 17.95 acre tract of land, more or less, out of Lot 11-1 West addition to Sherland. The planning department received a petition, a request and petition from Bruno M. Castillo and Luis R. Castillo from the Union Design Developers asking if we would voluntary annex 17.95 acres. This area used to be known as the Rosio Retreat. This tract is located approximately a quarter mile north of Military Parkway along the east side of Inspiration Road and immediately south of Meadow Creek subdivision and across from the Rio Grande Veterans Cemetery. Staff and city manager recommending approval of this annexation schedule.
Did we get the picture? And did we get a...
It's the one I thought...
There, there is a layout.
Yeah.
So I have a really, really good idea of which one it is, but...
Were they county or where were they?
They, they were county.
County, and they wanna be Mission City Limits.
And it's also part of the plan that they were trying to block off all the way into city limits, all the way to the river.
It's across the cemetery, right?
Yes.
And what, what do they plan to do then? Same thing?
A cemetery. That's what they're recommending.
Oh, they wanna do a cemetery there now?
No.
Well, that's the proposal.
The project that they wanna do is a cemetery, but half of it is inside the city of the cemetery already, and the other half is in the town.
Oh, okay.
So we figured that for us to be able to incorporate all the projects under the city of Mission.
But it would just be a regular...
It wouldn't be part of the...
It would, it would be a voluntary annexation, just...
No, but it's gonna be privately owned.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, it was kind of just, that particular area was just left out. I mean, it'll straighten out our, our line.
It wasn't there in Mendon.
Not at all.
I hold a second.
And Suzie, how long is the plan for this particularly?
By the end of February, we would be annexing everything. This is voluntary. It's a shorter process. It only requires two public hearings, which would be seen at the next, at the next... The first meeting would be the first meeting. Adopt a second hearing and actual adoption of the limits.
So they own the side, the property that's on the, I guess, the south side of the main canal? They own the other part of the, of what is it, 10... Oh.
Just this one right here?
Yes. And is that main canal gonna be an issue? I mean, I'm just wondering.
I haven't seen the layout of what they have. All they submitted was the area that one, that one is. But I haven't seen, they haven't shown us a proposal of the design yet.
What exactly is Mission Main Canal? What range, you know? JP?
The United Region Canal?
Yeah.
United Region.
United Region District.
Yes, they have the right of way, and they have the, their property and...
And this is where we, that's where we get our water from, basically, right? Is that correct? Okay.
Correct.
I don't think we're gonna cut it.
No. Just the south of that, that's where they build their big bricks and more.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is there any direction from the council?
I'm over approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second? Since we've already discussed it, I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed saying aye. Motion carries. Item 32 is approved by a vote. And I'm calling for item number 33. Mr. Perez, you got the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 33 is a discussion, possible action on modifying COVID-19 city emission guidelines. This item is the opportunity for the city council to make any modifications to the city's existing guidelines. One of the items that, in this particular item is the, the acceptance of the new county order. That county order was issued last week, starting Friday at midnight. And the change was the occupancy from 75% to 50% for all businesses. And then also to postpone or not have elective surgeries. Those are the two major changes. Considering the high numbers and the percentage, that, that triggered the county to issue this order. And so that's item number one on this particular guideline.
Does it have a, an expectancy date? How, how long they're gonna plan to be at this rate?
No, ma'am. I did not receive indication of, of a specific time other than... They're looking at percentages.
The governor has a statement that says that when they're, when the county is declared a hazardous county for COVID-19, until certain requirements and criteria are met to include open space or ICUs in the, in the hospitals within the county. I think it's below 85%. And, and, and when they get below 85% occupancy, at that point, then the restrictions are removed.
Okay.
And that's, that's why it doesn't have an expiration date. Because, because it's gone to county. Instead of the state of Texas shutting down, it's gone to county. As soon as they get to 85%, then, then it's reported to them. Then, then it triggers this, this new step.
Okay.
At least, that's my understanding.
Yes, sir.[1679.01] Yes, total number of ICU cases have to be less than fifteen percent.
Yes. The space.
Yeah.
Which is eighty-five percent.
Right. That's correct. And, uh, currently, our, our local hospital is about thirty-two percent in COVID cases.
So we have to bring it down from thirty-two percent to four, to below fifteen percent, and then we'll be able to go back to seventy-five percent or even a hundred percent.
That's, um, that's going to be tough.
And it's going to get a little worse to the present day. At the, the sciences, the scientists are saying that, that it's going to get worse the next thirty days than, than better because of the Christmas holidays. So we, and we're already on.
Mayor, is there any way that we could go into executive session on this item? Um, I do have some possible legal questions on, on our employee, uh, situations.
Uh, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to V T C A government code section five five one one zero zero one for item number thirty-three, or we can take care of the business.
Yes, let's do that.
And then come back on the item.
Let's do that.
Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am, that's okay.
Thank you.
Second.
I will retract, retract my statement in my, in my opening of the, of the executive session and, and, and put thirty, item thirty-three, which I will call later on, and call for unfinished business, item number thirty-four. So I need a motion to untable the item.
I move to untable item number thirty-four, the conditional use permit and renewal of alcoholic beverage at Spoggy's Ice House.
We have, uh, a motion to untable. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed same time. Motion carries, and we've untabled the item number thirty-four. It was tabled at twelve fourteen twenty twenty, and I want to open it for discussion, but before I open it for discussion on the conditional use permit renewal, I'm going to ask Mr. Martinez to preface it for us.
Yes, ma'am.
You have the floor before I get to Mr. Luna to give us the legal aspects of it.
Thank you, mayor. Um, this was, it was tabled twice before. It is attempted by the council to kind of hear it with the noise ordinance proposal. In fact, uh, this is independent of that, mayor. This is, this is a, a formality renewal of the onsite alcohol. So it, it really should not be kept, uh, you know, tabled. It isn't the noise ordinance, but I would recommend hearing it now. It simply is to renew their alcohol, uh, permit.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, for, for the legal aspect. Now I will call for Mr. Luna. You have the floor, ma'am.
Okay.
Item thirty-four is a conditional use permit renewal for the sale of, selling outside consumption of alcoholic beverages for, uh, Spoggy's Ice House at eight fifteen North Francisco. Does, it, the legal description is the south one hundred and nine point five feet of lot two, block one thirty-seven, Mission original townsite, and all of lot fifty-two, Johnnysure Industrial subdivision. It's currently still on C three. The applicant is Spoggy's Ice House in care of Sonia Mayhew. If the council is inclined to approve, this item and adoption of an ordinance would be needed. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Francisco and Eighth Street. The bar has been in existence at this location since nineteen sixty. The applicant is requesting the renewal of the C U P. Hours of operation are Sunday through Friday from ten to twelve AM, Sun, Saturday from ten AM to one AM. She's proposing three employees, including the owner as a staff. Parking and landscaping is held in, is meeting code. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will need to renew their T E B C and C U P license, and they must comply with building, fire, and health.
And it's also currently not open, ma'am.
It's currently closed right now. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
It is a public hearing?
Yes. Well, they closed the public hearing.
We had already closed the public hearing. This is the item that the council would address, so it's at the council level right now.
May I move for approval for the conditional use permit of alcohol beverages?
We have a motion to approve the conditional use permit renewal. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. In this, I open it for final discussion by the council.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Can, can you go back to that picture to, to, to the one before that? Uh, what is the, the, the occupancy of that building?
The occupancy?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have that information with me right now.
Okay, how, how do we, how do we, uh, decide that, 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 um, that parking is enough for?
Nor- normally for a building and in this area, it's, it's at least four parking spaces for, for, for the first four hundred feet. Each additional four hundred is an additional parking space, but since this is in the Mission original townsite, they are exempt from that requirement.
So because of their location, they're exempt to parking.
To add, to add more parking.
Yeah, uh, this is part of the downtown district.
Of the downtown area, so they, there, it's very limited parking that they have.
Could we ask for maybe the people that own the si- is that all of Spoggy's, even on the side where there's no concrete, where there's no, uh, pavement?
Yes.
Can we ask them to beautify it, or maybe we can assist them in that?
We can ask them to, to clean it up and re-stripe the parking. We can certainly ask that.
And I, I would say add parking because that's, that's, that's important to have enough parking and, and controlled parking because it doesn't have any striping, so it's just kind of like park wherever.
Yeah, that's what we, we can ask them to re-stripe and to, and to add whatever parking they can add based on the, on the lot.
But we have a formula for parking based on the square foot?
Yes, but this area is exempt because it's part of the original townsite. So it's just a matter of what they can fit within their lot.
But can we recommend the formula? You know, like the recommendation?
We can work with them to see the lot size and determine amount of parking.
And I recommend it to the, to them. Look, this is what we use somewhere else and.
Yeah, they can do it all the time.
We can ask.
Not that we require it, but at least.
We can ask them, yes.
Susie, I kind of have a.
I would like to.
I have a comment, mayor. Can they not work with maybe Daniel Silva because it is a downtown area and making a beautification? If they do do any type of modifications to make the establishment better and the parking, maybe there's a grant that they can apply for, for reimbursement?
They can, but I believe, uh, there is a contract in place. Right now, they're not legally the owners. They're renting to buy, so I guess until they're finished paid, then they can.
We can pass along the information to them.
But we can provide that information to the applicant.
Okay, but going back to whoever does own this property, can't we ask them to either A add or to fix there by adding pavement just as part of the beautification?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay.
Uh, for the rest, I know that this is not a public hearing, and, uh, they will not give enough sign up to keep, uh, in record to decide them, but there are two people who, who have raised their hands. I do not know their names. I can only lie sometimes, but I just want to.
Mayor, you're under no obligation to hear them. The public hearing has been closed.
Yeah.
And they did not sign up to keep for this item also beforehand, uh, it's very sensitive.
They can speak next, at our next meeting in public comments, and we can get a dress it then.
I'm good. And then lastly, Susie, we're, we are going to have, like, for the whole city to discuss the noise ordinance. It's not particularly just this, uh.
That is, that is going to be.
Certain establishment. It's going to be for the entire city of Mission. We would like as a council and the mayor to listen to the noise ordinance and what we're going to do about it. So that is going to be when?
Well, we're going to have on a schedule a workshop.
I'll answer that one. I'll answer that one right now. The, the difficulty that I have to bring it, bring in this item to the, to the table is that I need the whole council to be here so they can be able to bring the devices that we're going to be using, how it's going to be measured on the noises and so forth. And because we're, we're doing Zoom, you know, that's pretty much, uh,
A little bit hard.
Uh, that's why we, that's why I still haven't, I haven't brought it up to, 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 to the table. Uh, and if we can, uh, uh, I guess, uh, I want to recommend in the next city council meeting that all council members come to the deal, to, at, at your own request, at your own. And, and if you, and if we do, then we'll, we'll, we'll be ready to prepare. Or, or if we can call like a special meeting, uh, from now in between where, where we only deal with this, the item, and you make it short and quick and fast, you know, and come, and, 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 and come up with that, you know, that would be another, another item too. That's, that's why, that's why it's due. It, it was scheduled for today, but I, I wasn't sure whether everybody was going to show up or not.
Okay, thank you, Susie.
Any other question by the council?
If, if there's a message that you can give back to the people that raised your hand, so thank you for them, and, and, and then we offer them citizen participation uh, on the next city council meeting, all they have to do is, is, uh, sign up with Mr. Perril, and we'll be more than glad to, to, to hear him at this time, at, at, at the time that, that the item comes up. As far as that, and if you all are here, I mean, thank you for, for wanting to speak, but, uh, but we're moving forward with the item. I'm going to call the order for, uh, for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed same time. A motion carries. Item, uh, number thirty-four was untabled and is, and it now has passed five whole, and ordinance will be the number for the record, forty-nine eighty.
So we're, so we're adding the, the parking requ- request.
With the, with the, the beautification part. Not only the parking, but the, the, the control parking, the striping, and the beautification part. And the referral to, uh, to, to the M E D C, uh, direct for review. Are we okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
You okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Plata, we're okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'll call for item number thirty-five. I would entertain a motion to untable the item that was tabled on twelve fourteen twenty twenty. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
We, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed same sign. Uh, motion carries. We have untabled, uh, the item, number thirty-five, and Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Yes, number thirty-five was the approval of resolution number seventeen oh two regarding water, waterline access agreement with Sherland Water Supply with city ETJ for La Homa Crossing subdivision phase two. If you, if you recall, um, the concern was they wanted to know if the city would maintain this lit, filling stations. In this case, the city would maintain them. It's part of a requirement. This is just a formality uh, as far as the county planning requirement in order for any subdivisions outside our ETJ. They have to sign this agreement, and this is just only to secure the water for the filling stations. The maintenance would have to come from the city.
Okay.
I'm over approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. In this opening for final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same sign. Motion carries. Resolution seventeen oh two is item thirty-five has been approved five zero, and I'm calling for routine matter. City manager, you have comments?
Uh, yes, uh, good afternoon, uh, everyone. Uh, we will have a, uh, meeting, uh, later on, uh, this week, uh, regarding, uh, Texas District Fiesta and their upcoming event. Uh, we will be reporting that to the mayor and the council as soon as, uh, we have more information. Uh, they are, um, anticipating a, um, uh, costume show this, this coming weekend. Uh, that's a very limited, um, participation at the event center. Uh, that will be happening Saturday, uh, approximately, starting about one to five. Uh, they are going to be abiding by CDC guidelines, um, and that's this Saturday. Um, we will be, uh, meeting regarding their, uh, potential plans for a, the drive-through parade, so that's something that we'll be discussing with them and, uh, see what the participation is so far. I know that the participation, uh, might be a lot less this year, uh, because of the current pandemic, and so we'll be doing that. Um, also, um, just wanted to, um, publicly, um, congratulate the Sherland pioneers, uh, football team for representing the R G V, Rio Grande Valley, uh, in the, um. So it, it was a historic season for them. They represented the Rio Grande Valley and Mission very well in their playoffs, and so I just want to congratulate the players and the coaches for that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr., uh, city manager, Mr. Perez. Uh, now, mayors to comment. I do want to officially notify the, uh, people and the city and the staff that I have postponed the mayor's international brunch that is scheduled with the Texas District Fiesta, and I have moved it over to June twelfth, twenty twenty-one, if, if, if at that time the CDC requirements and the, uh, the, uh, uh, opening of the bridges, the bridge, uh, or will be, uh, will be allowed. So, so just FYI, uh, you know, so. I, uh, still had, uh, talked to the president of the Texas District Fiesta. It's like, he'll tell them to block off the time for me from, uh, from nine AM in the morning to, to, to twelve noon, or, uh, or in the event that we do, uh, finalize the, the signing of the sister cities with the city of Mazatlan, and also, we are working on, on a ribbon cutting for an office from the city of Monterrey, who they're going to open a tourist, tourist, uh, uh, office in the city of Mission to coordinate the, from the, for the United States. An office, they have one in San Antonio, but they want to open one here in the Rio Grande Valley, and they have chosen Mission to, to, to open that, and we'll, I'll be providing further, uh, information as, as, as we get the information per se. And I, I also want to let the, the public know that, uh, we're not getting any better with, uh, with the COVID-nineteen. You know, and, and as the mayor, and the, and I'm asking the council, uh, when we get to item thirty-three, to approve the, the safe measures that we need to provide for the safety of our, of our citizens. Keep in mind the CDC requirements, uh, not only, um, practice them in public, you know, because, uh, like, but also practice them when you're around your families in your, in your gatherings. You know, the Christmas gathering, according to the, to, to, uh, the, the scientist is, uh, is an indicator that, that we may have the worst month yet on CDC, and keep in mind, we have a lot of, I, I, we have a lot of people in Mission that, that are friends of mine and neighbors and, and, uh, and relatives that have either lost their lives or, or they're in ICU right now. You know, and, and in case, uh, you, you have not been around a family member that has had COVID-nineteen seriously, you know, uh, you won't, uh, you don't feel the impact. But, but when you, when you do see that those, that the im- impact of this virus, you know, and a lot of times I, I get, uh, I, I tell no to a lot of the mass gatherings, you know, and basically what I tell them is that, that, that I don't want to send somebody with a allow somebody to walk into your facility or to your program with a, with a, a virus that is deadly. You know, that's the bottom line, you know, and so where I'm asking that, uh, that, that the citizens of Mission as, uh, as, uh, as we group together, you know, fight this and stop the spread of the virus, you know. We can do it. It can be done. It's, it's been done before. It's been done in other, other cities. You know, for us, the, the county, the album, we just have to unite for one purpose, and that's to stop the virus, so, so we can be able to save, save lives, bottom line, save life, life safety number one. So without that, with, with those, that will end my, uh, my mayor's comment. And, um, and be safe, you know, stay healthy and be blessed. And, um, I'll move it over to the city council, and I'll ask the mayor both them to, to start.
I have no comments, mayor. Just for everybody, just be safe because the numbers are, uh, getting increasingly dangerous, and so just be very careful. Um, and happy new year.
It's got something. You have the floor.
I, I don't have any comments, um, mayor. Just echo your sentiments.
Thank you, Mr. Plaza. Uh, Mr. Plata, you have the floor?
No comments, mayor. Thank you. Just stay safe.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Plata. Torella, you have the floor?
No.
We have no comments, but Mr. Torella, and at this time, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to V T C A government code section five five one point zero zero one for the purpose of the public. We're also going to include item number thirty-three for legal advice and, and consultation with the, with, with our attorney on item number thirty-three. Uh, do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same sign. Motion carries, and I'll, uh, we'll, we'll move over to executive session.
I will entertain the motion to reconvene.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We reconvene. Mr. Terrio, I don't know if Mr. Blata is on.
I just want to ask.
If not, we'll do a 4-0 for the record, not 5-0. I will call item number 33 of the agenda. Mr. Martinez, you have the floor and then we'll let Mr... Well, let's have Mr. Perez first and then you will come up.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Perez, your final notes.
We discussed emergency leave and what is connection.
Mr. Perez.
Yes, sir. On the COVID guidelines.
Yes.
We discussed the emergency paid sick leave consideration. Also, the opening of parks. And also, the... The starting the process of putting a payment plan for your past due utility accounts. And then also implementing the testing for our employees for fire department through Texas Department of Emergency Management.
And the sick leave.
Yes, sir. And the sick leave to allow for COVID, under COVID guidelines, I mean COVID-19, the ability to have the share of the hours in sick leave pool.
Yes. If it's work-related, am I correct?
Yes. If it's work-related, it's under workers' comp.
Yes.
Whether the council wants to consider on the other one where it's not work-related at that point, whether to include it in the sick leave pool or not.
Just to extend what the federal government did not extend.
The 80 hours.
The 80 hours.
I move for approval, mayor.
We move for all items to be approved.
Yes.
As discussed in executive session.
As discussed in executive session.
And presented by Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any final notes? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Councilman Blata is back on duty.
Okay. So, Mr. Blata, you're voting for?
Is he unmuted?
Muted.
He's still muted. Okay. We'll go with 4-0. And when you finalize and check with him and if not, we'll...
I see you ready.
Take it, go, sir.
He's there?
Yes. What's with Blata? He needed to get that meeting.
Okay. That's okay. We'll move forward. Mr. Martinez, you have the executive session 36A.
Yes, sir. 36A calls for no action, mayor.
Okay. 36B?
36B needs the motion to proceed with case as discussed in executive session.
Do I hear a motion? We have a motion. Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item C?
36C, mayor. Lackways requires no action at the moment, but there was some directive given to myself and the city manager.
Okay. 37A?
37A needs a motion to authorize city manager to make offer to acquire land as discussed in executive session.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 37B?
37B, mayor, requires a motion to seek grant application funds from Parks and Wildlife to be used for acquisition of land as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 37C?
37C, mayor, requires a motion to accept counter offer on parcel 20, Phase 2, Taylor Road project.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second? We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 38A, Martinez?
Yes, mayor. 38A requires a motion to make changes to city manager evaluation process informant as discussed in executive session.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Blata, welcome. This is 5-0. And the last item on the agenda is adjournment. So, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn, mayor.
We have a motion to adjourn and do I hear a second? Second. Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5-0. And we adjourn.
Thank you, mayor.
Be safe, stay healthy, and be blessed.